I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you to everyone for coming out this evening. Let's get started with the roll call.
Trustee Guyer.
Here.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Baumann.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
And we are all here this evening. Moving into the first item tonight is our public participation. The first one is Veterans Day Display of Honor.
Good evening, everyone. Veterans Day is more than a date on the calendar. It is a call to remember, to remember the young soldier who left home with courage in their heart, the sailor who stood watch through the night, the airman who soared into danger, the Marine who never backed down, and the families who stood behind them with strength and love. Each story is different, but the thread that binds them is the same: service above self. Tonight, we honor the spirit of service, sacrifice, and courage that lives in the hearts of our veterans. We honor not only the battles fought overseas, but also the quiet strength shown at home. The resilience, the discipline, the sacrifice. These are the legacies our veterans carry with them long after the uniforms are folded away. While no words or gestures are ever enough to thank them for their service to this country properly, we do what we can to show our support. Tonight, we will unveil our display of honor in the lobby upstairs to support and thank the veterans of our community. This display is a small gesture, but it carries a big message. We see you. We thank you. We will never forget. As we unveil the display this evening, I would like to take a moment to recognize our veterans, both past and present, as well as the loved ones with us in the audience. If you happen to be here tonight, could you please stand as names are called? From the Air Force, we have Donald Northup. From the Army, we have Christos Delagianis. Earl Dix Jr., a Purple Heart recipient. Gary Hanson. Edward Klupar. Officer Scott Mine. Larry Pos. Chief of Police Phil Smith. From the Coast Guard, Officer Raymond Ritter. From the National Guard, Jeff Nemitz. And from the Navy, Sergeant Chris Johnson, Michael Johnson, Edward Frederick Marin, and James Shesky. Thank you to all of those who are with us here tonight. For those who are no longer with us, I invite you to join me in a moment of silence to remember those who gave their lives in service and to reflect on the freedoms we enjoy because of their sacrifice. Thank you. This display will remain up throughout November. It is a tribute to those who have worn the uniform of our nation. It stands as a symbol of our enduring respect and appreciation for the men and women who have served and continue to serve with honor. As you pay your respects, please pick up a pen to show your support this month and all year round. As you take time to view the display, I encourage you to reflect on the stories it represents. If you are a veteran, please know that this is for you. If you are a family member of someone who served, this is for you, too. Let this be more than a display. Let it be a reminder to carry the gratitude with us every day. Thank you to our veterans. Thank you to our loved ones, and thank you to everyone who supports our troops. May we always strive to be a nation worthy of their sacrifice. All of you have a moment and are able, I would love to take a picture of the display and all of our loved ones. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all for your service. I appreciate you coming this evening as well. All right, moving on. The next item this evening is the public comment. Is there anybody in the audience tonight wishing to make public comment? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to the consent agenda. I'll read the items and entertain a motion for approval. Minutes of the October 27th Village Board Meeting, Accounts Payable Summary Report through November 10th of 2025, and the Community Development Report for October of 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Go ahead.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes. And that carries 6-0. Thank you. The first item for separate action tonight is Resolution 2025-033 Designating the Intersection of River and Mill Street with the honorary street name dedication Marilyn Mickelini Way. With that, I would like to, oh, there we go, turn it over to Christina.
Good evening, Village President Brawley and Village Board. Tonight before you is a resolution designating the intersection of River and Mill with an honorary street name dedication facing the River Street side, Marilyn Mickelini Way. In April of 2023, the Village Board implemented a policy to allow residents to honor a family member or friend who dedicated their life and made notable contributions to the Village of Montgomery, State of Illinois, or the United States of America. Marilyn Mickelini, the first female village president, served from 2001 to 2013 after 14 years as a village trustee. During her leadership, she oversaw the construction of the new village hall and the police station and played a key role in attracting major businesses like Blaine's Farm and Fleet and Walmart to Montgomery. Staff does recommend the approval of the street name dedication this evening. Also, her son Mark Mickelini, Marilyn's son, is with us and would like to address the board if that's okay as well during this time.
Mark and Mildred, thanks for coming. Appreciate it.
Very exciting. I had the fortunate upbringing to grow up on South Lincoln Avenue in Montgomery. What a wonderful community. My mom lived here up until 2015, and in 2018, she had a massive stroke, and she's been hanging on and fighting ever since. But we're here to first thank you for considering her for a street name, an honorary street name here in Montgomery, and what a great location. Oh my gosh, the staff has been so helpful in selecting a location, and we couldn't have picked a better spot. Tonight, I want to kind of share a few stories about my mom with you. She was quite the character, and she always had a comment or two, as probably most of you know, especially the police department. I think she had a running relationship with the police department because my father, my father was diabetic and in very bad shape in the latter years of his life, and so we had frequent stops, wellness checks on my father. But it was kind of a running joke after a while. So I just want to just say a couple of things. That she was very fortunate to be the mayor during the boom-boom years. I mean, the growth that occurred during her years was just phenomenal. And I remember talking to her and telling us about going to Vegas and sealing the deal on the Sam's Club. But along the way, she brought Walmart and Menards and, and I don't know where it down here, Blaine's Farm and Fleet. And also a byproduct of that is one of her favorite restaurants. I still take her out to eat once a week, and we go to Cooper's Hawk up in, on Route 30 and 34. And that's such a beautiful location because you can see all of Montgomery from up there. You can see Ockett Road. And we park on the very end where they have those pickup things. We just park right there because I don't have a handicap seal, and so I have to just kind of cheat a little bit. And they are so helpful there. It's just such a nice thing. She's so proud of the village. I mean, we sit there and look at the village, and I point out to the Sugar Refinery over there and try to pick up as many landmarks as I can. Which brings me to my next story about my mom. My wife and I, Debbie, is here, and we were driving down to see her sister in New Yorkville. And we're driving down Route 47. We just left Sugar Grove. I looked to the left, and there's a brand-new water tower. It doesn't say Sugar Grove on it. It says Montgomery. And so quick, you know, I'm on the cell phone. Mom, Mom, I can't believe you got a water tower right there next to Sugar Grove. And she says without pausing, without biding an eye, she says, "That's nothing. You ought to see the pumping station." She was, she was so proud, and she loved the village so much. As an adult child, I always knew, well, actually, I never knew how much she worked. She made it look so easy. She was totally enthralled with her job and what she was doing. She took every call. I mean, we'd be having dinner. She's, "Oh, I got a call. I gotta take it." She'd go in the other room and talk about it, whether it was a good call or a bad call. But she'd take any call. An angry taxpayer, she took the call. An upset neighbor, she took the call. She saw people, something that I was too careless or too young to understand. But she had passion and understanding for virtually everyone. I don't know, Matt, he must be a saint as well, because to take everybody's call is, is very, very difficult. And what I realized was that my mother not only loved Montgomery, but she loved the people of Montgomery. And today, I've got Mildred here with me, and they just met through my mom being the mayor and Mildred moving to town. And you want to say a couple of words?
I will.
Okay.
Many of you know me already, and for the others, hello. I met Marilyn in 2004 at the very first village board meeting that I had ever gone to. Everybody that was there was very, you know, open and inviting and people-friendly. And as an outgrowth of that, Marilyn snatched me up and said, "I want you to come and be on the Planning and Zoning Commission. You have to, you know, make a request and all of that." But as an outgrowth, I did join. And I got, I had the privilege of watching the village grow to over 20,000 residents. And it has been an exciting journey. As Mark has said, there's been a lot of new buildings and all. But the people have stayed the same. They're friendly. They're open. They're supportive. This past summer, we had the experience with the lightning and the trees being on our, and everyone got out and helped everyone. It is a nice place to live. At least, I think so. And that is all part in part, not all of it, but a lot of it in terms of Marilyn. And I think we, we make ourselves proud when we do something in her name. And I want to thank you.
My mom's in a memory care center in Naperville. And Mildred and Jacqueline Simmons come and see her three to four times a year. And I think it's those relationships she built in the village and shared with other folks.
Your mother, every time we go to see Marilyn and we share or have any pictures, she just lights up. She really does. She just truly, she gets a smile from ear to ear. And I had the great fortune to meet her through Jacqueline Simmons, who had been a friend of hers through their widows group. So, yeah, that's been a blessing for me.
Yes, yes, wonderful. And then finally, I wrap up with one of our favorite stories about my mom. Montgomery Day is a big event for everybody. And three generations of Mickelinis walked in the Montgomery Days Parade. It was the big thing. We had all the grandkids, everybody. We had scooters. We had bikes. We did the whole parade. And every year, it was just a wonderful event that kicked off a wonderful weekend. And it will always be special for our family. Because not everybody got to ride in the parade and got to ride with the mayor, but our kids did. And it was just wonderful looking back. So, in closing, I live in the community. I drive around. I don't live in Montgomery, but I live in the area. And I drive around, and I love to drive through Montgomery. It's just a wonderful place, and the people are really what make it great. So I thank you for the consideration for my mom, and hopefully we'll pass, and we will be back to celebrate. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Mark. You didn't ask, but I'm going to share one story with you that maybe you haven't heard. So, so Montgomery's part of the Metro West COG, that's our Council of Government. So that's Kane and Kendall Counties. So all the village administrators and village presidents and mayors go maybe once a month, go to things. We go down to Springfield every year and lobby, and I know she went as well. For years after the transition, when, when she had retired, she actually brought me to my first meeting after she decided, after I'd won the election, she was retiring. She said, "Well, come to this meeting, you know, even though you're not in yet." For years, I would go to events, and they would say, "Well, you have to do this," because that's what Marilyn used to do. "You have to just kind of push your way to the front of the line." You know, maybe it's because she was shorter, but she like wiggled her way in. She was right next to the governor or the senator or the state rep or whatever it was to ask specifically her question. So I've been trying to emulate that as best I can. At five foot eight, I might be just a little bit tall for that, but I'd somehow find a way to make it work. So anyway, that's something that, I don't know if you've heard that before, so.
Oh, no, we knew exactly what it was. One year, as we grew up, we had all our pictures on the, on the piano. And we went off to college. We came home for Christmas that year, and she had all these politicians. It's like, Mom, some guy or some woman shaking hands. And we're like, Mom, what happened to us?
That's awesome.
So we know she was.
That's awesome.
I, I have a story. You had mentioned the angry taxpayer calls, right? And so I moved into, to Montgomery in 2007. My wife and I decided this is where we wanted to raise a family. And so in 2007, I live in Orchard Prairie North. It hadn't been accepted yet. The final lift of asphalt hadn't been put in. And so we were paying for snow removal privately because it hadn't been accepted by the village yet. And so I called the village president. And so I was one of those angry calls, right? And so she starts talking to me, and by the end of the conversation, she's like, "Well, you need to come down to a village board meeting," right? And so I went to a village board meeting, and then, you know, Denny Lee got his hooks into me. And before you know it, you know, three or four months later, I'm on the planning commission. Served on the planning commission for five years, and I've been a village board member now for, how long? 13? Going on 13 right now? So that's all because of your mom. And she invited me to a meeting.
Ah, so we need to talk to her.
Yes.
We need to thank her for that.
Yes.
Thank you, Marilyn.
It's all Marilyn's fault.
Some of us still haven't forgiven her.
All right. Well, thanks for coming. I appreciate it. Any further discussion? Or is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
So did we, I'm sorry. So did we straighten out the question, Debbie?
So it's, it's River Street being designated as the Mickelini Way?
The blocks they requested, but on here, it said the intersections, and that's just where the sign's going to go. Is that?
It'll go on top of the, one of our.
Okay. We were just discussing intersection versus street, so.
Got it.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
And that carries 6-0. Thank you. And once the sign is made, Mark, if you guys want to come back, we'll do a proclamation. We can take a picture, do whatever you'd like. Perfect. And thank you for coming. And both of you, and Mildred and Bill Foster, thanks for submitting the letter to get things, to get this approved. I appreciate, I appreciate your effort. All right. Okay, let's move on to the second item for separate action tonight is B, Recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission for PZC 2025-022. Sonia?
Thank you, President Brawley. UGL has been operating at The Grid since 2021. This is, it originates before we actually annexed into the village. So they've been operating there. They've expanded their operations to include truck sales now as well, which does require a special use. So they've been operating out of Building X. They would still continue to use that building, but it would include the truck sales as well. They've requested the special use, and they state that the outdoor storage area that they have currently for the trucks and trailers that they do repair on as part of their business, they would be using that fenced area for the staging of the, the used trucks and trailers that they would be selling. So they would still be using kind of the same outdoor storage areas for that. So Planning and Zoning Commission did hold their public hearing on November 6th and recommended approval of the special use for the truck sales at 275 South Route 31, Building X, with conditions. Those conditions are outlined on the report. It does include hours of operation and the removal of a sales trailer that is currently located adjacent to the building. So we have that recommendation. We do have an ordinance before you that combines both this special use request as well as their special use request for the truck repair. So it's one ordinance since they're sister companies in same location. So. The petitioners are here to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, perfect. Do you want to go through the item C at this, right now as well? And then we'll go through questions.
So as I said, UGL has been operating out there prior to the village annexing the property into the village. Truck repair service is considered a special use. They were grandfathered in as part of the annexation agreement in PUD because they were already operating out of the space at Building X. They have since expanded or are proposing to expand. So their outdoor storage areas for trucks and trailers has expanded since then, and now they are looking to expand into the adjacent, a portion of the adjacent Building H for their truck repair. So they're requesting a special use and outdoor, special use for outdoor storage for bringing their existing operations in Building X and that area into compliance and then allowing for the expansion. So they are, had their public hearing on November 6th. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval. There are some conditions on there related to hours of operation and getting building permits for the improvements in Building H. But they did get their recommendation for approval, and so this would bring their operations now into compliance as opposed to them just being grandfathered in.
Perfect. The only question I had is, is the petitioner okay with the conditions that are on the both approvals, zoning approvals? Have you discussed that with them?
That was my question as well.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions from the board on either item? Okay.
Motion to accept the recommendation of Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
And this would be B. This is item B. Okay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
And that carries 6-0. Motion to accept item C, Recommendation of Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Okay, that carries 6-0. Is there any objection to putting item D, Ordinance 2153, on consent for a future meeting?
No.
All right. Well, thank you for coming this evening. We will formally adopt your ordinances at the, at a future meeting, which I think will be the next scheduled meeting. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item E is Recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission of PZC 2025-025 Leonard's Rezoning at 4834 Baseline Road. And if you'd like, you can just, you can talk about the item G at the same time, because I believe it's the, basically the exact same process to rezone.
Yes, it is.
If you want to talk through that, and we can have questions.
All right. So 4834 and 4822 Baseline are adjacent properties. They're both single-family homes. They're being used as single-family homes in 2021 as part of the comprehensive rezoning and the adoption of the Unified Development Ordinance. Those properties that had been zoned R3 previously were rezoned to M1 as part of that rezoning process. The property, again, is being used for single-family homes, contains single-family homes. The petitioners state that they were not notified that this rezoning was happening. They have concerns about being considered a non-conforming structure, and if something should happen to their home, being able to rebuild, et cetera. So they were requesting that they get rezoned back to a residential zoning district. So in looking at what their lot sizes are and what the previous R3 zoning district minimum lot size and minimum lot width is, the most appropriate zoning district for them to go into now would be the R1 zoning district. So if we rezone those to R1, which was the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, that would bring both their use and their house, their principal structures into compliance. So Planning and Zoning Commission conducted the public hearings for both of the items on November 6th and did recommend approval. Since this is more of a housekeeping matter in this case, and with the holidays coming up, we are requesting waiver of first reading on the ordinance approving both of these, or the ordinances approving these.
Questions?
We discussed the fees, correct?
I think we waived those.
Yes, so you approve the waiver of those, so they've not been charged any fees.
Perfect. Motion to accept Recommendation of Planning and Zoning.
Second.
E.
E.
Item E. Okay.
Second.
The motion, and then second by Guyer.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
And that carries 6-0. Item F, ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Youngerman, second by Guyer.
Wait, are you doing, F is the zoning map. Are you trying to do G?
No, it'd be F, waiver of first reading.
Okay. I'm sorry, then. Who made the motions?
That's okay. Youngerman and then Guyer.
I just did it so Doug didn't get to make it.
Okay. Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
And Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Okay. And that carries 6-0. Thank you. Item G, Recommendation of Planning Commission?
So moved.
Moved by Brzaska, second by Guyer. Go ahead.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
And that carries 6-0. We are going to get, next budget season, we're going to get the tap-in buttons for recommendations, so, for motions. So go ahead with, with H?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Perfect. A motion by Guyer, second by Spurling. Go ahead.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Feel goods. 6-0 all around. All right, let's keep that going. Item I today is PSA for Design Engineering for Material Storage Bins and Fuel Island Improvements. Mark?
Thank you, President Brawley. So the material storage bins that are currently at the Public Works facility are continuing to deteriorate, as well as the lifespan of the fuel island equipment is nearly 30 years old. Proposing issues, there's also changes to the regulations from the state of Illinois as it relates to underground fuel storage tanks that are taken into consideration here with relocating those to above-ground fuel tanks in the future in closer proximity to the new Public Works building. This project with the material storage bins was originally proposed in the construction of the new Public Works facility. Unfortunately, due to budget concerns, it was removed. But additionally, since that time of being in that facility and our, of reevaluating our needs, there are changes that are proposed, hence why we're moving forward or asking tonight for this agreement to move forward for, to incorporate those changes in the construction of those or the design of those, those bins. So if there's any questions from the village board, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
I have one.
Go ahead.
So this will, just relocating, process, operation's still the same. Police still will use them, I believe, Montgomery Countryside Fire.
For the fuel island portion?
Yes.
So again, I mean, we're, this PSA would be the start of the design. Obviously, we've already somewhat talked about what that would look like, but yes, that would incorporate all the same uses that are currently taking place with the Fire District Police Department as well. with the Fire District Police Department as well as Public Works Operations.
This is the, go ahead.
Are you relocating?
Yeah, so we're going to take the, the existing storage tanks, our underground storage tanks that are currently at the existing facility, 891. We're going to be moving them closer to the 991, new Public Works Building. And we're also looking to propose to have them located outside a fenced-in area to minimize some of the maintenance and the excess of use on the gates due to the system that we have where basically there's requirements and credentials that basically don't allow anyone to dispense fuel that aren't capable. So that way, we're, we're kind of making things a little bit easier for long-term maintenance on ourself. And as I mentioned, going to above-ground storage tanks, that reduces the need for us to have UST-certified, Underground Storage Tanks certified employees on staff, which requires additional testing, both monthly, quarterly, and yearly.
So this is the Design Engineering?
Correct.
Do you have any idea when? I see the EEI schedule and there shows construction in 20, May-June 26. Do you have the, the total cost for construction in next year's budget?
We do not yet. We're working, actively working on that right now to get, working with our fuel provider to kind of outline our equipment needs as far as it relates to the fueling equipment. The material bins, we've got a good basis of what that is with the bids that we received originally in the Public Works Building. Again, there's been some modifications. Some of those modifications, we're hoping will decrease the price. For example, originally, it was proposed for all those bins to be covered. We've since removed a good section of the covered portion and only specifically drilled that down to the, the bins that we need to have covered, so.
Cool. Do you have an estimate of how much it'll cost?
I do not, not off the top of my head.
Got it. What are you trying to put in the budget?
Again, without it in front of me between the two, I, I don't, I don't have it in front of me.
That's fair.
But I can get it to you.
That's fair. Okay. Any other questions? Cool. All right. If there are none, motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Youngerman, second by Marisak.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
That carries six to zero. Thanks, Mark. All right, item J tonight is PSA for Preliminary and Design Engineering for the Douglas Road Resurfacing with S, STP funding. Go ahead.
Thank you, President Brawley. So the village received a grant through the King Kennel Council of Mayors for the Surface Transportation Program. This money is allocated for the Douglas Road corridor that extends from US Route 30 to Ashland Avenue. The village, this would also incorporate areas of both within The Village and the City of Aurora. Staff is, will be working or is working with the City of Aurora to draft an intergovernmental agreement. But preliminary discussions have already taken place with the city and they are on board, obviously, as we had to have that partnership going into the submittal for this grant. But we will have a formal IGA to present to the board for the cost share. Cost share will be relative to the sections of road that are within each municipality's jurisdiction and accordingly paid for. The reason we're moving this forward tonight is there's an opportunity for us to potentially get money allocated sooner than originally projected. So we want to have the project designed, completed, and ready to go so those funds become available that we can be able to move forward with the project within next year's construction year. If there are any questions from the board, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Cool. And we would be the lead on the project?
Correct, yes.
That makes sense. All right.
So moved.
Go ahead. Moved by Marisak, second by Brzaska, go ahead.
Trustee Marisak. Trustee Brzaska. Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann. Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, thanks, Mark. So moving on to items for discussion tonight. First one is the 2025 Tax Levy Announcement. Chris?
Thank you, President Brawley. Tonight, we'll be beginning the public process for adoption of the 2025 Tax Levy. The first step in that process is announcing an estimate of the upcoming property tax levy for the 2025 levy year. We are announcing a staff levy request for fiscal, or for levy year 2025 in the amount of $2,720,000 and, $720,300. The 2025 levy year taxes are collected during calendar year 2026 and finance the activities of the city's fiscal year 2027. The requested staff levy in the amount of $2,720,300 does represent an increase of $102,980 or approximately 3.93% from the 2024 levy. The requested levy does incorporate a Consumer Price Index or inflationary increase of 2.90% as calculated and allowed by the Illinois Department of Revenue. The CPI increase of 2.90% as requested is the maximum amount that has been calculated for the Department of Revenue for incorporation into the 2025 levy year for communities that are subject to the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law, PTEL, or the Tax Cap Legislation. The increase in the levy will be used to partially offset the increase in the amount of village contributions to the police pension fund. Each year, as part of the audit process, The Village has an actuarial study that is performed to determine the level of contributions that are needed to the police pension fund in order to be able to pay the benefits to the, to the pensioners as they become due in the future. The actuary has determined that we will need approximately $1,216,500 in contributions, which represents an increase of approximately $149,000. And the anticipated $102,980 increase in the property tax levy will partially offset this increase in the required contributions. We will still need to absorb the remaining $45,000 of the increase from other revenue sources. Additionally, property taxes are the third-largest revenue source in the general fund and represented approximately 15 and 1/2% of the fiscal year 2025 general fund revenues. In terms of the process, following the steps this evening, the next step would be the first reading of the, of the proposed levy ordinance and a public hearing to be held at our next meeting on November 24th. And then we would present a second reading of the tax levy ordinance and ask for consideration of adoption of the fiscal, excuse me, levy year 2025 tax levy on December 8th. The levy must be passed and filed with the counties no later than the last Tuesday in December. Staff does recommend approval. We'd be seeking your feedback this evening on the proposed levy in the amount of $2,720,300. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Questions?
I have one. So the $149,000, is that an increase? Is, is that above and beyond what we already contribute annually?
It is, it is $148,000 over the contribution level that was, that was calculated last year. So yes.
What, do you know what that number was?
The number, the actuarial determined contribution was about $1,016,000.
Okay.
I'm sorry, $1,067,000.
Well, that changes it then. Yeah, that's, now we're talking.
Otherwise, it doesn't math.
Yeah.
Pen four, any other questions?
Why did it go up so much? But why, why such a large increase here over year? And why, I, I guess overall, why, why so much money? Are we contributing to this?
It's a good question.
I always thought that, you know, when an officer starts, the actuary figures out that if they work here their entire career and retire from here and based on increases and stuff, we should be setting aside X amount of dollars every year to cover that pension. I know that's probably very simple terms. But why all of a sudden? Is it because we've hired more officers? Is, was something changed in the past?
We have, we have actually had, I did go back and look at some of the, of the contributions that have happened historically. And we have had various periods in time where we've had some pretty big, some pretty big increases in the required contributions. In this particular case, there were a couple of things that really contributed. Number one was the, the expected increases in the costs and benefit levels. Usually, you see about a 3% to 3 and 1/2% increase just because the officer has, has another year's worth of experience. That means they get a higher percentage of their salary as a benefit when they retire. And it, it does flow through. They also typically have salary increases that go along with those at, at that point in time as well. But the larger item and what contributed in this particular case is there was an actuarial experience study. So what the actuary does is every four to five years, as it was explained to me, they go into the specifics related to not just The Village of Montgomery's Pension Fund and what that experience has been in terms of benefit payments and, and experience and comparing it to the actuarial assumptions. But they look at hundreds of pension funds statewide related to police and fire. And they make adjustments to things like the retirement rates, the mortality tables, at what age an, an individual officer or public safety employee retires. And then they update the tables and bake that back into the, into the actuarial assumptions, which translates into a computation that happens for the, for the contributions that are required. In this particular case, they found a couple of trends. Number one, mainly that officers are retiring earlier. And so what that means is more assets go out of the fund. They're receiving benefits for a longer period of time. Additionally, the fund isn't receiving interest income because those assets are starting to come out of the fund. So that actually accounts for about 2/3 of the increase. It's, it's the biggest factor in what happened in this particular case. But the whole idea is to, as you indicated, Trustee Guyer, is to put that money away over time so that you, when you combine that with the interest income and the investment earnings, so that those funds are there to pay benefits over time.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Did you say earlier, did I hear correctly, that that still falls short? The amount is actually $147,000?
It's almost $150,000. It's just shy of $150,000.
And so that other $47,000, $48,000 is going to be found somewhere?
Yes, well, we'll need to bake that in as we go through.
Right, so I guess my question is, again, not being an advocate for just to levy, just to, you know, for levy's sake. But when we go through the budget and it's, we struggle to find $1,000 to plant flowers downtown, right? Why, why are we not finding a more actual number to meet that with this levy to cover the entire $150,000 than just saying, oh, we're going to find $50,000 in the budget somewhere or subtract it from someplace else?
Yeah, because we are actually limited by the amount that we can request in the levy by the tax cap law. And we're, we're levying at the maximum increase that we're allowed to levy at.
Right. So either we have to find an extra $50,000 or we have to find an extra $150,000. That's basically where we're at.
Well stated, yep. That's exactly it. Questions? On the side? I'm sure that staff would love to know what your opinion is.
Did anybody calculate what this would relate to as far as increase per household?
Yeah, for a, a household with a $300,000 market value, it would be an increase of about $11 a year.
Okay.
I think it says $367 per $100,000.
Yes.
So it's a dollar a month. This is your CPI, basically, it's your CPI increase to keep running The Village, yeah. Additional thoughts? Go ahead.
But I think it was $11 last year, right?
Yeah, approximately.
And it was probably $11 or a little bit more the year before.
Yeah, we didn't levy a year before, though.
I've never levied.
Yeah.
So let's just keep that out there. I've, I've never voted for a tax levy. I'm, I'm still a no, but it's up to you guys. It would, look, look at what's going on in the state. The, the taxpayers out of Chicago are now paying for the CTA tax or the, the transit tax for Chicago. We're being taxed out of this state.
We could talk about that, but it's, it's a, I understand your point.
I was a no last year. You guys raised taxes last year.
Okay. Any other thoughts? I do appreciate that. I'm fully in support of levying what we need to do to keep the government running. In this case, it's a dollar a month per house.
Yeah, why? With our police pension fund.
As best we can.
Yeah. I mean, I, I agree with Trustee Youngerman. I do not like to levy either.
Yeah.
But, you know, I don't think any of us do. The problem is, is, so what are we going to reduce? I mean, if we don't levy, as staff looked and said, well, if we don't levy, this is what we're going to have to reduce. Is it staff? Is it Christmas tree lighting? Is it, you know, senior lunch? Have contemplated what that would be. Is it Montgomery Fest? I mean, we're, I know Montgomery Fest is largely through sponsorship, but, but we have a, a cost there with staff and overtime. So what are we going to eliminate?
Yeah.
To make up the $150,000?
So I think, and I think we talk about this every year, it's, it is backwards. And I, I know it's tough to square it for residents or, you know, or all of us personally, that we're asked before the end of this year to tell the counties how much money we need, knowing that our budget isn't even finalized for the next fiscal year, which starts in May 1. So what we've, what this board has been pretty good about over the last decade is we're going to at least, we're going to ask for what we need to run government. And then at the end of this budget cycle, if we determine that the property taxes that we asked for, plus what we anticipate for our other, other big ones, are more than what we thought, we have the rebate that we've been doing that we could rebate back to people who apply for it. So that's the only, I mean, I don't know of any other government that has that tool or that uses that tool to, to rebate a portion back. But that is, since we're having to make a decision in December, that's at least one option that we have come April.
And we just increased that rebate a few years back, right? It was 50 and we went to 75. It was 45 and we went to 75, so that's 30 bucks. That's basically, that, that would cover last year's increase and this year's increase. And then have some left over. And again, that's if people want it, they request it. Because I've talked to residents about that too. And they've said like, I don't need the money. I, I just assume the village have it and do, you know, keep the village going.
Right.
The other way to do this, and I talk about this each year, is to take, try and take the burden off the residential sector and continue with development.
Right. And you and I agree on that.
Yeah.
100%.
I don't think anybody's.
And I think we've been, I've been very proactive at, at doing that.
Sure.
And, yeah, and I, I agree.
Any other thoughts? So the only reason why I keep pressing is that I'm sure staff would like clear direction from the board tonight so we can start to get stuff ready by the end of the month. If you have additional questions of data that you'd like to see before you offer up an opinion, otherwise?
I support the fact that we need to, we need to fund our police pension.
Okay.
I mean, they've worked hard their whole careers and they're entitled to that money. And I don't know where else we would find $150,000.
I'm not saying not to, to fund our police pension. I'm just saying we need to find different avenues to do that. And through development is a way to do that, through, through property tax and sales tax is a way to do that, through, through property tax and sales tax and generating that income and then funding it that way.
I wasn't suggesting you were not trying to fund it.
Yeah.
Right, until, until those means are there, you, it's, you have to do it. You just have to do it. There are annual contract increases that happen each and every year. You have the pension contributions each and every year. You have the benefit increases each and every year that happen. I mean, it, it's, it's no different than, you know, the, the, the village operating as a business and you have a budget to work. Just as a business owner, I mean, how, how long are you going to hold the price of a tree at a certain point to where the increases go up four or five years and you have to increase the price at some point? It's, it, it's, it's just a matter of doing it. Do we want to pay more as a homeowner? No, we don't. As an employee, do I want a raise every year? Yes, I do, so something has to happen. We can't sit here and say, we're never going to raise taxes. I've never raised taxes. Well, that's wonderful. If there weren't six or five other people to do it, where would the village have been? What shape would the village be in? I get that you don't want to do it, and I am, it's wonderful that you can say no and I'm not going to say yes. It's, it's, I'm a hard no, I'm a hard no, but if everybody was a hard no for another 10 years, there would be some catastrophic situations then to dig ourselves out of.
But if we could.
It's going to happen.
If we could push development, we wouldn't have to be in that situation.
Gets to that point, you don't have an alternative until you have that development occurring.
Well.
I look at you Jeff and say we need to get more development.
We don't know what's going to happen with sales tax revenue with the new big box.
I've been a board member for 13 years, and I've been saying we need to push development.
I would say that staff understands the entire board is supportive of that, and staff is focusing on that, and.
Well, and every time we push for development, how many incentives do we give? How much village dollars do we incentivize with waiving permit fees, waiving these fees? All of those things progressively over the years continue to add up as well, but those are the things that we have to do. Those are the tools in the toolbox that we've given to staff in order to entice development, and sometimes it's still not enough, as we recently experienced. So again, I, I don't feel, I mean, I feel like we've done a good job. We've annexed in a bunch of properties. We've got these new potential developments. We've annexed in the Caterpillar property. We just voted on one of those, so I don't feel like that there's a lack of effort to get the development. It's getting it to be here, and then what's the cost of getting it with, again, these fees and permits that we kind of push to the side that still are actual dollars? They're staff dollars. We're still paying the staff to be here, and we're not levying, and at some point, we have to pay the piper.
Yeah, yes. All good points.
So, it's a different subject, but this kind of falls in to Trustee Marisak's point. Do we have any retail establishments that are still under a sales tax rebate or just one, maybe two? I thought some of them expired.
Sam?
Look and see just how many we have, but we do have, do have at least a couple that are still.
Okay, I'm just worried if any of those were going to expire in the near future because, I, I mean, we've always also, you know, looked at with future development or sales tax rebates as well, or it gets down to, and I think Trustee Youngerman has said this before, is at the end of the day, you'd rather have 50% of something than 100% of nothing, right? I mean, that's basically the choice you're making.
Mm-hmm.
And, yeah, until those agreements expire and then we start getting 100%, it, yeah, it is, we have to find other avenues, and who knows when those agreements expire perhaps in the future? Maybe we'll be in a better position that we can just go back to, to holding the line again.
I could, I could be wrong, but I don't think any of our, what you would assume to be our largest sales tax generators are not under agreements anymore, right? Those have been paid off? I thought the, the biggest one with Sam's Club was about, was paid off, right?
I believe so.
It's not paid off yet?
I, I don't believe it is, no.
It's close. We're very close.
I believe it's close, yes.
Yeah.
Got it. Where they would hit it. They're going to hit it early, yeah.
That would be a really great piece of information for us to get, like maybe in the notes of what's out there still.
Yeah.
Versus what's, thanks.
And again, and not to just continue this conversation, but again, I think we've done a really good job at, you know, you said they're going to hit the numbers. It's either X years or, or a, a number certain, whichever comes first, and I think that was a very good position to take because once they hit the number, then, then we're done, right?
Yep. Okay. All right, I think Jeff has what he needs. We will be likely talking about this or to be on future meetings before the end of the year. All right, thanks, Chris. All right, moving on to item B is the snow and ice presentation for 2025, 2026.
Yeah, I have a question. Is there any changes from last year?
No.
Thanks, Mark.
Second question, how long is this?
Yeah.
While he's doing that, I will cover future meetings. Our next village board meeting will be Monday, the 24th in this room. We do have intergov that night beforehand. That's the week of Thanksgiving, so if you.
Six or six thirty?
Is intergov at six or 6:30? Six o'clock, perfect. So if you are out of town that week, please let us know, because that's Thanksgiving.
Is it on the screen? Did I do it right? Is it on their screens?
Yeah, we got it. Okay.
All right. So as Trustee Guyer stated, there are not any changes specifically for this year's snow and ice plan for the Village of Montgomery as it relates to our operations, but again, in every year, we go through the process of what it takes for us to complete these services throughout the winter months, so. So again, we talk about what our goal is to ensure safe and accessible village streets for residents, businesses, schools, emergency services, maintain pedestrian access to public buildings throughout the winter season, reduce roadway downtime and maintain accessibility during snow and ice events. We also restore arterial and secondary streets to the pre-storm conditions within eight hours is our target, and then cleanup of cul-de-sacs, dead ends, alleyways, with our final cleanup is prioritized after the major routes are completed. So these are kind of the things that we go over, obviously with our staff, and just to kind of back up a little bit, we did our snow kickoff meeting, which we do every year internally with our public work staff. We hosted that last Thursday, so we talk about all the ins and outs of the actual snow plan itself, which was, is included in your packet. So there's a lot of information that is given to all of our employees that for some is a reiteration from year to year, and some is obviously new to them as we have newer employees. We also know that last year, we didn't experience many events, so again, even some of our people now who are two and three-year seasoned veterans don't have a lot of experience behind the wheel, so it's very important for us to do that process. So kind of going back to the tools that we use, which are huge for us, weather forecasting is obviously one of the big ones, right? Everybody watched the different weather stations and apps and radars and all the different things that we can utilize today, which are great, but it's really a great tool for us, something that we absolutely need to be able to do different things, such as our preparedness before the events. So some of the major things is trying to get an understanding of timeframes of when events are going to happen and come into play, and then orchestrate that around how our day-to-day activities are going to look to make sure that we have adequate staffing to go out and perform snow and ice events. It also helps us a lot of times to expedite the process in our pre-trip inspections, so if we know events are coming, a lot of times we can prep trucks, make sure that they're ready to go, do those pre-trip inspections. That saves us that time from when the event happens. And now with our new facility, obviously pre-loading trucks is something that really helps us out a lot as well, and expediting the process of when our crews can, staff get called in to be able to go out and hit the road. The other major component to that is trying to plan for long-duration events. A lot of times that can be very challenging, so that's where the forecasting can really help us to kind of calculate and figure out what way we want to move forward with that.
I have a question, real quick if I could, on that forecast. Are they like really drilling down in Montgomery? I mean, we're wide, right? So it could be, we can get 10 inches on the west side and 2 inches on the east side. Are, are they like drilling down in the village or are they just kind of giving an overall village?
No, so, I mean, there's different avenues to use. We use DTN, that's the one we subscribe to. There's, there's a million weather apps out there, different radars, which is amazing. You'll look at radars and they're, they're showing usually similar, but some of them can be different, significantly different. So we are able through DTN to put in requests, but again, you know, we all watch the Weather Channel and hear what's going to happen and then wake up to reality. So we try to take through, go through all of that information, look at it as, as applies to us. We also do sometimes utilize the ability to send direct messages to the meteorologists through DTN. Sometimes, too, we can look at our neighbors who will submit questions and be able to get information based off of that, so.
Okay.
So talking about trucks and equipment, this is one where I always say thank you to the village board and your continued support of us having the proper equipment to be able to go out and do the, the work that we need to do. So we obviously can't do it without all of the different pieces of equipment. You can see here, we vary between heavy-duty trucks and equipment, medium-duty, light-duty, and then we even drill down to the snow blowers and smaller type of equipment that it takes to clear some of the public facilities. So some of the other things that we have in our toolbox is our anti-icing and de-icing. The village's board is familiar with our intergovernmental agreement that we have with the Village of Oswego, where we kind of trade off the process of anti-icing. They have a sophisticated brine-making system that they provide us with the materials, and a result of that, we do some of the applications to some of their segments of roadway throughout their village. We've been able to up that a little bit with the added additional truck that we put on about a year ago, so that's really helped out our efforts. Again, we didn't get to use, put that to use a lot last year due to just the weather conditions, but something that is another great tool that we have in our toolbox. De-icing, to quickly talk about, we've only utilized de-icing one time in my 13 years here. Typically that's done post-event, where we get long-duration events. We have sub, sub-zero temperatures where we get a lot of snowpack, where we need to use an aggressive agent to go down, basically put down on the roadways to be able to break that bond between the snowpack and the roadway to be able to get that up. But again, something that we're able to utilize, but fortunate for us, we, we don't have to utilize on a regular basis. The.
Question on de-icing. Is that, I should recognize it, but is that only on bridges and elevated roadways? Are we de-icing on all major arteries?
So it's, well, it's dependent on the situation. It could be on, on arterials and secondaries. Again, in my 13 years here, we've had to do it once, and we only did it really on some concentrated areas. In the instance that it happened then was related to drifting issues, so it was only segments of roadway, not entire roadway sections that, that it occurred on. So it just depends. Again, it's very infrequent that we have to utilize that.
Were you asking about treating before the snowstorm?
Well, yeah, no.
Yeah, so.
But I mean, that's a good one, like, like beforehand, that's most arterials, correct?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I, I misunderstood. I thought you were talking specifically about de-icing. The anti-icing is a preventative measure. So the anti-icing, we do have, we do that on all of our arterial routes, all of our mains get anti-icing, but then we also have what we kind of call our problematic areas. So that consists of like roads like River Bend, there's another one out, on the west side of town that's escaping me, but some of the areas where we've got steeper inclines or aggressive curves where we'll utilize that as well. And then we use it at the facilities. We've started using it as well for the parking lots and the sidewalks.
Did last night's event get the necessary attention, do you think? Because I was on Orchard Road around midnight, and it was not a pleasant drive from 88 almost all the way to 30.
I, I think that, you know, the first event of the year was a little tricky. I think temperatures dropped drastically faster than what was forecasted and anticipated. So I would say, yes, we could have, I think in hindsight, done a little bit better job of being proactive and getting out ahead of it. However, I don't know the state of Oswego's brine-making system. That's a conversation that's actually taking place this week. We're meeting with them to make sure that everything is good, review the routes with them to make sure we're all on the same page to move things forward. It's kind of our first early event of the year, but nevertheless, yes, I think we could have, I think a lot of agencies could have done a, a better job with last night's events.
Orchard Road is county, correct?
Correct, yes.
I saw them out at five.
It was late.
Yeah.
Question, is Dixon Road ours?
Yes.
So now we have the new.
The section of Gordon is the village's, yes, correct.
The section that's where the curve is?
Mm-hmm. So that's actually Gordon Road. That, that new segment of roadway is considered Gordon, and then it transitioned into Dixon, so, yes.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Going back to our more traditional use of fighting snow and ice is road salt. We continue to work hard at reducing the amount of road salt that we use from year to year. Huge process that we do is the calibration of all of our trucks. So again, first event came, we're, we're a little behind. We are in the process of calibrating. This week was on our planned schedule to do that, but really what that does is that allows us to have uniformity across all of our different zones when we go out and, and perform snow and ice operations. So that way, when we go out, we can basically set exactly what we want to put on roads and we provide that consistency throughout the village. So extremely important because the trucks can vary drastically on what they're putting out if you just go off of the controllers in the truck, so it's a huge process that's really been beneficial. One thing that I always talk about, too, is each and every storm dictates a different rate application for our salt. So again, we put a lot of thought and effort into that to make sure that we're putting down what we think is the best and also weighing that with the effects of not wasting salt from a financial standpoint, but also not putting excessive amounts of chlorides out and being respectful of the environment, so huge, huge part of that. The village board has already approved the use of MFT funds this year for the purchase of our road salt through CMS. We put in for 814 tons. We have the ability to go 20% over that amount or 20% under that amount, so it gives us a little bit of flexibility. We are currently sitting on about 2,500 tons of salt, so we're in a very good position right now as we start the season. So we talk about some of our challenges. Staffing is always one of our biggest challenges, as I talked about earlier, not necessarily from having the correct numbers, but just depending on what's going on day to day, sometimes can be an issue with staffing and getting adequate people in the vehicles to do the work. Garbage collection is another huge one. We've talked about that at the village board level multiple times, about cans placed in the street. Definitely causes a lot of frustration and basically really slows down the operations of our trucks, having to navigate around trash cans on garbage day, so that's a huge one. Water main breaks is another one, those unforeseen's that we can't predict, so a lot of times, obviously in the winter months is when predominantly those occur, trying to transition and obviously address those while still performing snow and ice operations. Then we also have the day-to-day water production. Operations is a huge part of that, too. As you all know, we're required by IPA to carry out our water production, basically testing that happens every single day, the reading of our wells, but we've also got things like Julie Locates that are required within a certain timeframe to be completed as well as customer service appointments. So again, staffing levels kind of fall into play there as well. And then the other major one that's always there and never goes away is traffic, depending on the time of day, is, is, can be very frustrating and very difficult for us to maneuver and be able to get through the village, sometimes whether it's going through our routes or sometimes it's getting back to public works to get reloaded with salt to be able to get back out to our routes.
I, I have a question on the traffic thing. Last, was it last winter that we increased the fine, or was it after winter?
When was last? Last?
I think it, I think it was last year.
I know that we increased the fine for certain things, but I can't remember if it was last winter or after last winter.
I think it was last winter. Yeah, last week.
Are, did we fine anyone last year? Because when we tell people to move off the street, they kind of laugh at us because they, they'd say, no one's going to get a ticket, but... What's that?
We did break, what did we do?
Okay. And what did, what's the new fine? I think a hundred bucks or something like that?
I don't remember.
Okay.
I don't, I don't recall what it is.
You haven't remember? I think, I think it's something like that, yeah. Okay.
Mark, I also had a question for you. So going back to your staffing, and I know you mentioned at the beginning, you know, differences in experience levels, is it fair to say that everyone is qualified to at least get behind the wheel of one of these trucks?
Yes, absolutely. So all of our staff right now currently hold CDLs that need to. We have one new staff member who has not obtained their CDL just because of the timeframe they were hired in.
Sure.
Fortunate for us, that's our new facility supervisor, so Tim typically will not be in a class, a CDL class truck, so, but we, as part of his job requirements, he will still obtain that. So right now, as it sits, all of our drivers are, have the appropriate license to do that. Again, there's also newer guys that we have that will be going through some training processes, again, depending on when they're hired. Haven't seen a winner yet, so we'll have that as well to take place. But yep, right now, everybody has a license that needs to operate their, that vehicle.
Perfect. Thank you.
So we talked a little bit about routes. So the village maintains about 162 roughly miles of roadway for snow and ice operations. Obviously, that number varies a little bit as development comes in, but it's pretty close. We also, a huge part of that is we do not subcontract any of our plowing within the village, and that's not only for that 162 miles, but it's also for the roughly 15 facilities that we do. Of those 15 facilities, Village Hall, the Police Department, Public Works are obviously three of the larger facilities. So then we drill down to our, mostly our off-site wells, lift stations and pump stations as well. So again, when we think about it, that's a lot of snow clearing and snow operations to do for not only all the public streets, but also our facilities as well. So just kind of something to touch on what trustee Guyer talked about earlier, we are very short north to south, as you can see on our map, of a very long east to west. So again, something that I like to point out when we reference the map is just how much conditions can vary from each side of town to the next. So that's something that during operations that we're always evaluating as well. Sometimes on the west side of town, we see substantially more snow. We'll see higher drifting rates with wind conditions and open farm fields more on the west side than the east side, so something that we're always obviously kind of navigating, but like to point that out. Here's just kind of a quick map of our three major facilities. Another thing that we like to point out on this map is the color coding. Again, in typical perfect conditions, we like to go there and we'll like to go through the whole process and clear everything, but it doesn't always work that way. Sometimes we're pressed to make sure we've got things safe to the residents and employees to be able to get into the buildings, so sometimes we have to prioritize different areas in our process, so that way we make sure we can hit those goals as well. So we talked about routes. Just to kind of break down for everybody, there's 23 employees total in Public Works, including myself, so you can kind of see a breakdown up there. We do something every year, we go through our routes and basically look at the experience level of our drivers. We also look at different things, various things, such as where some of our water operators located and routes, and we try to make those so that they're kind of evenly split between our three water production facilities, so that way it kind of makes sense if we get calls that they can go to those facilities and address things as needed. So a lot of thought process goes into our route design. But again, one of the things I like to point out is this is what we call our typical. This is our perfect scenario of all of these individuals are going to those areas and doing that. It doesn't always work that way, you know, vacations, holidays, or holidays, I'm sorry, sick time, different things like that, shift changes and schedules where we have those long-duration events can alter those schedules, but we do a really good job of managing that and working through it.
So does John Herb just not get to go home?
Why, is he on the only guy?
He's mains, he's on by himself.
He's the only guy on mains, yeah.
Yeah, so what's the backup?
We need that, we need one more person to fulfill that spot, so.
Dion's going to come back and do that.
All right, he volunteered.
Fully trained. My training, when I started, we had a freak storm. I started on October the 19th, and my training was up, down, left, right, this is how you turn on the salt, try to make right-hand turns, and don't hit anything. That was my training.
So it's the same?
Twenty-seven years ago.
You gave away the playbook.
I told you, we haven't changed anything. So one of the things that we're able to add this year is public education. For those of you who want to go on YouTube and watch, you can see there's some educational videos that we've been able to put together. Some of them are safety reminders, some of them talk about the process of snow removal to help educate some of our residents, and also try to give an appreciation for what our guys go through, and try to help us out as well to make sure that we can get that job done. So that's something new that we've been able to implement as well, so if you're interested, you can go and watch those. We're not going to play any of those tonight. So with that, there's a ton I can talk about when it comes to snow and ice operations, and you can ask my guys, they, I spend about two and a half, three hours talking about this in our meeting, to the point where, you know, it gets exhausting, but it is a huge part of what we do. I like to tell all of our staff members, I think, in my opinion, the number one, at least in the Midwest, thing that people associate with Public Works is snow removal, so it's something that we take very serious, and it's something that obviously we strive to do the best job that we can. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board has, or...
I'm pretty sure everybody in this room is going to agree, everything you do is so forward-facing, you know, Public Works, basically, with the exception of anything that's buried underground, but our streets during, before, during, and after snow events have been like top, top of the class for as long as I've been paying attention, which has been 12 years. I've not found a situation where I leave Montgomery and go on to another municipality's roads that are in better shape than ours. So I appreciate you and your team.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's always, I always love that, when I worked for the village, to read comments about, how come the Village of Montgomery roads are so nice and nobody else can have a size, you know? I zip through Montgomery and I hit another municipality and they're all snow-covered.
Very noticeable.
But I also need to add to that, I know that that does not come with, without sacrifice. I know that's a lot of hours, it's a lot of midnights, it's a time away from your family, so I think I say this every year, but please thank the guys for everything they do and their spouses and their families as well. Have to pick up the slack at home.
I have an equipment question. You had a listing of all of the trucks that were in the snow fleet, and it looked like the oldest was only about 13 years old, so I guess a preemptive question is that, it was the 2000, it was the Ford F-550. Is that unit still in pretty good shape? Going to have that for a while? Anything on here looking like we're going to see it on a request for replacement in the next coming budget cycles?
So there is, that vehicle particularly was up for replacement two years ago. We deferred that because it was in good condition, so again, something that we do each and every year is we take the recommendations that are set forth in the VERF, I know people like hearing me say the VERF, right? The Vehicle Equipment Replacement Fund. We look at those recommendations, and then we look at the actuals, and we do that every year across the board, whether it's squad cars or plow trucks or what have you. We look at all that stuff. So that particular unit is up to be replaced next year. We feel that it's worth moving forward now that it's been deferred for two years. Another vehicle that you'll see next year in the replacement will be one of our five-yard units, so we will be looking and requesting to move that forward, but we do feel like, obviously, we'll look at the budget numbers once we start putting those together, and then, you know, we obviously change accordingly from there, so. But again, that's where, again, I say I can't thank the board enough for your support with the replacement, because that's a huge part of it, too. Breakdowns are inevitable when it comes to snow removal, and it doesn't matter if the truck is two weeks old or it's 12 years old. There's always something, there's always issues. You are, you are putting that piece of equipment to the true test with the conditions that you're out in, and in some cases, working those vehicles for 24 hours straight, so things are going to break and things are going to happen, and so having good equipment just really helps expedite that process and makes it easier for us.
I have a question. On that 2012 that you want to replace, is it going to be a Peterbilt?
That, that is the plan.
Should we order it now?
Sure.
I'm not going to ask.
Is that an approval?
No.
You're going to put the snow fences up again this year along Gordon?
Yeah, so we'll, snow fencing is something that we do to try to help mitigate some of the drifting that occurs, but we have specific areas historically that we've done in town, a lot of them on the west side, but some on the east side, areas like River Street, along Cemetery, Gordon Road, and that open field section there. So yes, we will be, in fact, we were discussing that heavily today, as well as decorations for the tree lighting event. There are a lot of things happening in the month of October, November, and December when it comes to Public Works, so it is, it is definitely a time crunch, and it is something that we will get done.
Again, thank you for the presentation. You guys do.
Thank you.
We want to talk about mailboxes.
Nope.
He's got a whole slideshow for that, if you want.
And real quick, just to confirm, trustee Youngerman, the fine was increased last January to $100 for parking during snow removal?
I would, I would like to discuss increasing it again. It costs us money to go back out. You guys are talking about levying taxes. If people are costing the village money to go back out to, go back to roads and things that they've come through the first time and they couldn't because they were parked there, we should increase that. I said last year, I think, 150.
I appreciate the effort.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, anything newer unfinished to come forward, board?
I got one quick thing. This is for the chief. I understand KenCom made a change to their operations as far as communications that's driving the scanner groups crazy, that included Montgomery also.
Yeah, so recently they've written the regulations.
So everything is about encoded now, or?
Encrypted.
Encrypted, yeah. Okay. Thank you. Yeah.
I think we've had that technology for a while. I think we're waiting for another municipality to get it.
Yeah.
For a while, one of their frequencies was already encrypted probably a year and a half ago, two years ago, and they just, all of them are.
Cool. That's all I have?
Director Wolf, I had put in a request at the end of September for a streetlight that was out. It's on Seasons Ridge Boulevard, and then right when you come out from the post office, so it's right in front of the pet supply store. Just curious about the status. I don't, I don't know, I was over, I was in that area over the weekend, and it was still out.
Yeah, I'm not, I, obviously, I'm not aware of it personally, but yeah, something must have gotten lost in the shuffle, because typically, we're about a minimum or a maximum of two-day turnaround on streetlight repairs, so we'll definitely get on it.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
I apologize.
I thought that's kind of strange that...
Is that the one by the drive-through entrance for Dairy Queen, back in that area? Is that where it's?
It would be, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, when you come off, yeah, it's at almost a T intersection. It's like straight across.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Cool. Anything else?
We have a certification meeting Wednesday, 6:00 PM at Public Works. Everybody's invited.
All right, if there's nothing else, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Przaska?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Bauman?
And we adjourn.